Hi guys, welcome back to my YouTube channel My name is Nnedi Machedi, you know me as ChidiChedi for those of you who don't know me And today we are vlogging, today we are vlogging guys Today is Thursday, oh today is Thursday E4, it's April 2024 Wow, E4 is April 2024 What? E4? Ha, E4, it's April 2024, 04, 04, 24 Wow, wow So guys, it is the end of the month and Yeah man I'm not okay because it's a week Only to find out if the Our videos are not better Or awake, I'm loud I don't think so So I've vlogged in this, it's a week But it's fine, we should So today is a Thursday and I found my birthday I just want to change my studies because I feel like I don't speak English I don't speak English I don't speak English So yeah man, I'm thinking of going to the library Maybe for like 4 hours because now it's 12 It is 12 o'clock and maybe I'll come back at 4pm Just want to catch up on some schoolwork because like I've been procrastinating and procrastination is not okay You see, so I'm starting this vlog now because I feel like Yeah, yeah, I feel like starting a new vlog And also Because I don't understand what he He's 6, ah no, he's 4 and I'm going to go to the other way So I just pray for the time you guys see this vlog I'm sorry if I'm late because what's So yeah guys, it's still not bad I don't think it's good I'm just gonna go in bed now Some minute Hi guys, I'm done bathing Good to go guys So much It's my birthday Like I didn't even have a chance to do it I must just go So I am done, I'm gonna show you guys the outfit of the day Yeah, it's good Let me open this, so I am wearing this crop top from Mr. Price And The trousers from clothing junction Let me show you guys what it looks like These are the trousers Then the start of the show The start of the show Which is my new babies here I don't know, I feel like I'm forgetting I feel like I'm forgetting, it's not looking But I feel like I'm also cute So let's pack up Pack I don't think I'm going to use this Pack So I found a video today I think I got an email And A PR A PR is not good I sent it to him I sent it to him And a PR My channel, yeah My cut in case I don't know which water bottle should I carry I don't know which water bottle So yeah I'm gonna need an umbrella obviously and My girl here I don't know which water bottle should I carry I don't know which water bottle But then I'm gonna need it Then The therapy to pain Then I'm just gonna pack up my laptop I'm wiping it now because It's going out today So I don't have any laptop So yeah Taking the laptop Oh, I slipped, I slipped Then all the charger Also I'm also taking my tripod stand because I don't want to vlog I don't want to vlog So I don't want to vlog It's like guys, I'm moving Oh, it's hot It's hot It's hot I don't have a charger I don't have a donation, I don't have a charger Actually, charger is the reason why if I get isolated It is because of Because of this thing Because it keeps on moving and my log move Yeah, for later So if we are done, I'm gonna use the mini charge Please, please Because this, I get I wanna run away Okay, I think I'm Oh, a pin I don't know if I should put your story This You I don't know if I'm going to go on the journey Yeah I'm first Let me open it That door, let me look My soft thing is big It feels like I'm in PT I don't want to do that much Let's go guys, yeah Let's head out, it's a bit Let's go guys I'm going, I found because it's a deadline End of the year, I'm sad Because I'm not Jewish It's because it's in Gaza Guys One thing that is so nice about coming to APK is the graduation When I see our graduation Like, I can't tell because like I found more and more and more Not me vlogging APK and I don't care I don't forget it As long as my subscribers are, I will like videos So we're going home and the reason I'm going home now is because I got a message from my house I'm going to the same place and I'm going to And I'm going to Yeah, I understand, so yeah guys, let me just put my phone away, bye Hi No, quiet Smile Smile Oh, I'm so much Oh, I'm so good Do you want me? Do you want me? Hi guys Like I've been trying to vlog Me, as you can see I don't have a video here I said last year I know this vlog is boring But it's just like one of my boring days and all that So I hope you guys are gonna enjoy the video And actually I hope you guys enjoyed the video, I hope you guys enjoyed the video Please like, subscribe and tell your friends to subscribe to my channel Because I'm a barber Wow, I'm young I'm crazy So I'm done with my classes for a week Hi guys, um I don't want to go to the hall But whatever, it's the hall, it's the hall I vlog I vlog Okay, the last time I came, I was from campus Then after that, I'm going to So I feel like I don't want to vlog because I love Tuesday And today is Tuesday Meaning Meaning I vlog, I say post But because of if vlog now, I vlog I don't want to do it So hi guys, welcome back to another day in the vlog Today is a Thursday and it is currently 12 It's currently 12pm, I look So I'm going back Hmm? So I'm going back Yeah, so it is the end of the month and I'm just like Let me go to the library again and study So after studying Like I don't want to go to the library I don't want to go to the library Yeah I'm tired of it I don't want to go to the library So maybe after our study session, we can go to the Meddi, if not KFC or Rockmamers We just want something, Orlando's, we just want something It's a duty My girl was 70 I found it So yeah, so because of I'm on a Wednesday Right, I'm on a Friday Right, so after Saturday, I'm on Monday I spend a lot Because I do have a weekly mission I do have like a weekly schedule You start So usually I'm used to studying like here Like I study in my room But I'm just like this thing of not getting up Bath and go to the library and just study Because I don't want to go to the hall And this is what I'm gonna do for the rest of the year Because why not? So guys This dress You can get it from GD Plugs, which is I'm the plug, I'm the GD plug So you can get this dress from me I'm 22 Let me show you So yeah guys, let's go to campus This is my bag This is my bag and maybe laptop is charged Because I might not even get like AC It's not plugged, it's in charge, so yeah guys, let's go So guys, I am heading out Let's go The sun is setting Same